Call this regular council meeting of Monday, March twenty fourth, the order at seven P M. Please stand for the pleasure.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the right, in the United States of America. To come over to the nation, I'm here, God, and in this world, we're the reason you're all.
Mister Taylor, would you give the open curve?
Sure. Dear Lord, please look over council, citizens, all in attendance this evening. Keep us all in your prayers and your thoughts and make sure that we all stay safe in years to come. In your name we pray. Amen.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Mister Lawson, Mister Clement.
Here.
Miss Son, here, Mister Flowers.
Here.
Mister Taylor.
Here.
Make a motion to accept Mister Lawson's absence.
Miss Son, yes. Flower?
Yes.
Mister Taylor?
Yes.
Mister Clement?
Yes. Okay, we have two meetings worth of minutes. Did everyone receive the February twenty fourth and March tenth minutes? Any corrections or additions? Can we accept them together?
I suppose you can do it as once.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the February twenty fourth minutes.
Second. Mister Flowers?
Yes.
Mister Taylor?
Yes.
Mister Clement?
Yes.
Miss Son?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the March tenth minutes.
Mister Taylor?
You can pass when something's just required by motion, okay? The, it's a majority of those, so there's four, so there's a quorum. But even if it's a three to one, oh, three to one, two to one, it'll still pass.
All right.
Or it would only pass if it gets fewer than two, it would not pass if there are more than one who against it.
Mister Clement?
Yes.
Miss Son, yes, and Flower?
Yes.
Okay, auditor.
Sorry to mention that.
Auditor Treasurers' Report.
Good evening, City Council, residents in attendance and folks watching at home. We'll start with the Treasurer's Report for February two thousand twenty five. The Treasurer sends his apologies, he's currently working, could not make the meeting today. However, his report will send to you, I believe, on Friday. You see the first page, account balances for each of the three main accounts. Totally up to six million, four hundred seventy seven thousand, three hundred eighty four dollars and nineteen cents on February twenty eighth. You will see on the next page, interest earned on the accounts here of the, I think. I just noticed the titling, it says money market account, but I believe that's. It's usually money market and checking in that category, I think there may just be a typo. But basically the sweep accounts in the first row in interest earned year to date. And then the C E below it, that Counselor Flower says. You can see its deposit dates as it was recently started or renewed, excuse me.
Can I ask you a quick question on that page?
Yeah.
You said something about a checking account. Are we writing checks on these, these, this account, please? You don't write checks on CDs, right?
Correct, correct. So there's not checks being written against the money market or the C D? That's why I say I think the checking, which is actually called a sweep account, is missing, it's supposed to be.
And that's not the two million. The sweep account's not two million. It is. It is the two million.
Yes, and the C D is three point six.
So is that why these figures keep changing? Because I know the C Ds will change because there's a time limit on the C Ds.
It won't change except for it will increase because the interest.
As the interest is.
Yeah, we have to book the interest even though it doesn't capitalize the words. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. The next page, you'll see the bank reconciliation broken down by category. And against it, the book reconciliation. He's got me all turned around, I'm sure the books first usually, anyway. I think we got some changes in the report this month, and the book reconciliation, the important part coming down to the bottom. Which is a zero dollar difference between the two, maybe February. Apologies, I didn't expect that, few small curveballs there. That's the Treasurer's Report. If there aren't, if there aren't any questions, can I get a motion?
I, I can't find the interest.
Oh, you may be missing a page, but I can give you my copy.
No, just tell me the words. Isn't there one figure?
Oh, so on the record of investments page, we've got year to date interest on the money market, six thousand, four hundred fifty six, sixty two cents.
Thank you.
On the C D, it's sixteen thousand, three hundred fifty eight, eighty two. There has been interest earned on the sweep account because all accounts have to earn interest here at the city. But that's just the missing category, so you folks, I'm sure will see the next, next report.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I'll make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report.
Second. Yes.
Miss Son, yes. Mister Flower?
Yes.
Mister Taylor?
Yes.
All right. For February twenty twenty five, we've got the Auditor's Reports. Even though it feels very springy lately, this is for February, so I left our wonderful winter picture from Miss Kittle down Columbus. You can see in the first section, revenues and expenses were basically balanced with revenues very slightly outpacing expenses. Major fund balances, six point one, six two, two hundred twenty five dollars and thirty one cents. With all of them categorized as healthy, except for the general fund, which is just a bit shy of it this year. So for your online version, if anyone's pulling the report online, there's a link to the cash statement, which confirms those numbers. As well as the expense and revenue reports for those in the room. There's a cash statement in the back of the packet, as well as the check reports. I'll take a moment to stop at. The check report, see if there's any questions from counsel or the audience about this month's checks.
The K nine unit kind of keeps showing up on here, what are we going to do with thirty two thousand?
That's a good question, currently I don't have a.
Let's buy it all, plan expenses.
Working on identifying the best candidate for that position.
You're going to buy it all?
Ideally. Yeah. It's special person to be located.
That knows that.
Just wanting to get the right one.
Any other questions on the check report? All right, I'll keep going. Next up is the credit card transaction report, fortunately a short one. You will see several small charges, including lows, which was utility equipment or material, excuse me. A pallet of water purchased from Kroger. Random fact, any workplace in the state of Ohio has to have access to easily rapid water, like that you can drink very quickly. For the utility guys, that's bottled water, they want to get a pallet. And then the Harbor Freight, it looks like that was when sales tax was accidentally charged on an order from Harbor Freight. So they actually refunded the order, redid the charge without the sales tax, which is why you see it in and out there. Couple of small items for me, the carpets across the building were cleaned on Friday, they did a pretty good job. We're really impressed, they were very quick this time, they got the layout of the building. And they are coming back for the tiling in the bathrooms and some of the office spaces without carpet, as well as the police department for stripping and waxing. What did we say that, was that this week?
I think it's Friday.
Yeah. So we try to get them in here about twice a year, which is really not enough, but it's enough to like keep it from getting too bad. I think I need to go train on one of them because I mean, it needs done like weekly around this place, it's too busy for that. Tax day for all residents and businesses, please remember your income tax forms are due on April fifteenth, that's a Tuesday. If you live in the city and have taxable income, you must file. If you work in the city but you don't live here, you do not have to file if your employer was out. And if you're doing business whatsoever, like a small business, medium or large business, you do have to file. If you're retired or disabled, you can fill out a one-page form and never have to worry about us again. Which most folks have already done. And. I think that's it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What happens to the taxes and everything that's taken out of old people's checks since we don't have that?
Um, do you mean city taxes or?
Just, I mean, there's, you know, a good bit of money that's taken out, so who gets that money since?
Well, so if somebody is having, say, some type of retirement income, if they're having taxes taken out for the city, they should, so they should request a refund. If they're working, it's still, so I know folks can like retire and then they get like a part-time job.
Right.
I'll give an example, if they're taking social security, their social security income would not be taxable to the city. But let's say they work in part-time at Rocky, it would be taxable, just that income. So it creates a question of whether the city wants it or not, as far as earned wages or retirement wages. And unfortunately for us, all of us here.
It sounds like, sounds like somebody's getting taxes taken out of the council check.
So because it's earned wages, I'm going to speak hypothetically, the state law says I can't speak about a specific case in public. Hypothetically, if somebody was earning wages for, say, being like township trustee that was working in the graveyard here in town. But they were retired, it would still be taxable, just that.
Graveyard.
Just that income. Yeah.
I understand.
Okay. Hypothetically, hypothetically.
I didn't mean to put.
No, 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 I appreciate the spot, I just want to make sure I honor my obligation.
You did, thank you.
Tax very deep.
You did.
I was going to say, unfortunately, those rules are set by the state, the city has zero say in taxable income and non-taxable income. But the state legislature does. And it's, if I can editorialize, I think I'm far enough in my term to be able to editorialize for a minute. It's the worst taxation system in the country and you should contact your state legislator, state legislator and tell them to please simplify that. Because it's very, it's very broken and behind, I think many of us would agree.
Okay, any other questions?
Off my soapbox.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the check report, correct?
Yes.
So move.
Second. Miss Son, yes.
I got one more question.
Yep.
Nine one one.
Yes.
Athens County. If I'm following this across, twenty two thousand, one hundred thirty six dollars, is that what we pay this year?
Yeah, I, I remember right, that was our first quarter. Although this was February, you could have been paying in advance for the second quarter. For.
So that would be one, two quarters?
That would just be one.
Yeah, twenty two thousand dollars? The yearly contract, like eighty seven, eighty seven, something like that.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay. And they bill a quarter, right?
Okay. Yes. Sorry about that.
Mister Taylor?
Yes.
Mister Clement?
Yes. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the Auditor's Report for February.
Second.
Mister Flowers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mister Clement?
Yes.
Miss Son?
Yes.
Thank you, and when counsel gets to the interest allocation, if you wouldn't mind indulging me for like two or three minutes, I'll come back. Talk about the interest legislation, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Patterson. Are there any citizens' comments?
The good news for today is that Hockin College, they put out the information about them getting their observatory. And that is free to Hockin College, they just have to pay, put the dome over it and all that. Another thing that is free, any student does not pay when they go to the observatory, there is no charge for students. I thought that was quite outstanding because you know students love to look at the store.
Any other assistance comment? Business and organizational comments. I believe, Mister Reed, Mister Courtney is here from the Ad Hop Commission, did you have anything?
Please, counsel, I can share a little bit of our last meeting.
Please do, thank you.
Good evening, counsel, thank you for having me. We met on Thursday, and we did not decide to take any formal action or recommendations to you all for this current time. However, listening, discussing what I shared with two members of the council here last meeting, December problem, which is that. Five members of this body, two of our city elected officers, their terms expire at the end of November. Issue twenty three specifically says that new terms do not begin until January first, so we're going to have until March December. With large chunks of the city government missing and really making city government not able to operate. That causes concerns for the city budget for the calendar year twenty six, as well as making sure that the city community's financial obligations. Before any budget is created for the calendar year twenty six. We're banging around a couple of ideas to fix that, or potential ideas that can be used to fix it. None of those are really big enough, I think, to share publicly quite yet. But we're kind of going back to the question of ballot measures to get authority from, you know, the voters to answer some of the questions that are still outstanding around that, so. That was a lot of what was discussed during the meeting, probably ninety percent of it, so I've been answering questions that I can now. So we are meeting again, today escapes me, I think April third is, April third, fourth, third, April third is the next, they're giving me.
So basically, as of November, when is the election, November sixth?
Six or seven, yeah.
Seven, say seven, there's two months gap there.
Well, so the, so, city terms under the charter expired at the end of November, so.
Oh, that's right, because the new council would normally take, actually, it's in December.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Is there any way that we can pass something on this council, you know, isn't?
No, it would have to be by the members. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm working through the charter right now, and I'm sure Mister Robb does as well, trying to see if there's anything that allows for, allows for that, just one month period, but. It's not, nothing's coming up yet.
Those elections would have to take place in November typically. So if we were to, our terms are up, so if we were to re. Want to go for reelection, we would have to have our stuff in by August, be able to November ballot, or be able to for, for December, yes.
And we, we discussed the potential for running concurrent charter council elections with statutory council and statutory office elections. Significant concern about confusion having caused for those voters and candidates for those offices. I think what we really would like to avoid is someone who thinks they're filing for one office, filing for the statutory office, filing for the charter office. They're elected to the charter office, not the statutory office, then you have January first coming, you have two people saying they claim the same office. It costs some problems.
It's a name, it's not just like candidates, but also the board of elections, they might misprocess, again, they do a good job, but what if they happen to misprocess one set? Of petitions on the deadline, there's no lawful way to fix that, so there's just multiple, no executive.
That's it, you know, we're definitely working on the timetable, but we're not up against the wall on it yet. Mister Robb is working on it, my, my fellow commissioners are working on it, and we're hoping to have something turned around of at least some written ideas, written proposals to deal with the issue. And during your term, so.
Thank you, and your fellow commissioners, so you're doing, we appreciate it.
Problem solved, so.
I have a good group to work with, so I'm, I'm, I'm very fortunate.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
We normally take off at one month in the summer?
Two.
We take two months?
We take one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
Oh, yeah. What you left there?
One, if I may, one aspect of the December problem would probably be that. You know how counsel spends the December meeting doing year-end things, I think all that needs to be bumped up, no later than November. That's an additional challenge because, you know, the city will be having the new city auditor in September. And normally, that person would still be kind of, you know, getting up to speed at that time and. While they're still learning the ropes to basically tell them, oh, we need to expedite ordinary duty, that is just something that needs to be brought now. In other words, once they come in in September, they're going to have to start working on year-end stuff. Right away, as part of their transition. I think maybe one aspect of it, counsel may need to, this is related to the December problem. But counsel may need to authorize advanced payment of employees' salaries. Just to ensure they get paid, but I have no doubt the new statutory council will proceed with payment, but there's, they're going to have a lot of stuff to get up and.
But, but, the elephant in the room is the May sixth charter with the mayor. What happens after that? Because that does away with issue twenty three, it passes yet.
Right, so there would be no, if that ballot measure passes, issue twenty three goes away. Any transition problems with issue twenty three then go away. Two, and this is what the commissioner and I were discussing, or I shouldn't say, the commission was discussing at their last meeting is, you know. Issue twenty three has statutory form of government, it's the box of statutory form of government with an elected mayor. This charter amendment has an elected mayor, but it's in a different box, it keeps the charter. It depends on how the voters view it, do they want an elected mayor which is in both boxes, or do they want the particular box? They're the ones who can decide either way, they can decide, oh, I don't care what box, as long as there's an elected mayor, that's fine, but that's up to the voters.
But I think, I think, Mister Robb, the confusion is that, that charter with the mayor, I think the citizens have spoken. And I mean, I know everybody's saying that I'm going to run for mayor, I don't want to be mayor. I want the city to thrive, but I also don't want the confusion of that. The two on there, they're not going to, some people are not going to really understand it, I don't believe, because I've been asked a lot of questions about it. And not only do you understand it, I don't know what happens if the, if the charter with the mayor passes, that does away with issue twenty three. Correct. Okay, then do you have the same problem with the Ad Hop Committee? Or does this, this council run after May?
If I may, I want to be careful here discussing this. The commission, we are operating as if issue twenty three is going to be law going into reelection twenty six, no matter what. We'll reassess, you know, what law, what the law is when.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, as we're going.
Yeah.
But a, a, a lot of issues with the transition to a new form of government. Primarily related to the way that the city government operates. Those would in effect not be issues any longer with conforming, but I told the council last, last meeting. We have offices and departments in the city in Elsible now, they're made the same thing that exists under the higher revised code. But they do very different things and operate in very different ways in the way the higher revised code says they, they need to. Because the charter gives the city flexibility and the ability to determine how this operating. So we, we, we need to conform with issue twenty three. Is a law going, now we need to conform our government to what is described under statute. Before the transition, the transition day comes. If issue twenty three were to be repealed in May, that problem goes away, I mean, I'm sure there's other issues that we're going to have to work on. You know, even with going into a mayor form of government, and that would probably go back to you all to decide whether or not you want to turn us in that direction, since we are called the issue twenty three advisory commission. Issue twenty three doesn't exist anymore, you know, our name needs to be changed, I think, but, no, in, in short.
Formerly known as.
But it does, it does make sense that if, if the statutory form of government is where people want it to go. I don't understand, Mister Robb brought it up very early on in the process, why wouldn't we go with, why wouldn't we promote the charter amendment? And then have you guys create a, an actual transition plan, which should have occurred initially, which didn't. Because it took two to three years to transition from statutory to the charter, why would it all of a sudden be a month? Like, that, that makes zero sense, so I think if we created the, you know, the transition, you know, with plenty of time. And, you know, allowed for that creation of those positions in the city or that timeline. That makes more sense in my opinion, and it doesn't disrupt the flow of business for the city. But that to me is just applying logic to a situation that's obviously where chaos was intended.
President Clement, I might, Counselor Taylor, what you, what you said at the beginning exactly right, it took three years to transition to the charter. We have thirteen months, we'll do it now, to get out of it. And we would like to have a concrete set of, here are the actions you need to take to do this thing, to do that thing, to do this thing. To be able to conform with O R C well in advance of, of December and have more than a month for city operations to conform. The December problem specifically is worrying about the calendar year twenty six budget, because that's normally done in December. City's financial obligations, and also whatever emergency situations might arise that require, you know, public business that requires legislative authority to deal with. That's what the December problem is, we're not implying ourselves, you know, just a month for transition. But for us, we decided that this is kind of Capcom one on this issue, trying to figure that out, to make sure the public business can be, you know, can be executed when it needs to be in December.
Does the Ohio revised code lay out a statutory form of government?
Yes, Title VII.
So following that would be the simplest way to do it?
Well, that is the framework we need to fit into, right, that, that, that is the square-shaped hole we didn't need to make, a square-shaped government to slide through. The issue is, is that. That is the default government staple idol, there are other forms of government that can use corporations to take. And the code spells out how, how you can go from that statutory to those different forms of government. It does not just define how to go from the charter back to this, so there's a lot of legal activity that just us free legal and just saying, all right.
We're, you know. Not just a plug and play, that's the situation.
Yeah, because like I said, the, the government we have now looks the same, it's called the same things in some ways, but does completely different. Looks the same, it's called the same things in some ways, but does completely different, often do completely different things. Um. And at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure it's there to seamless transition at city services. Uh, you know, that when you need to call the water department, that there's a, you know, water main leak out front, or there's something that missed on your bill. Um, that you're able to call the city and get that taken care of, so.
You got a job.
If I may, the official ballot language for the charter amendment is out there. I have a copy of it right here. And it does allow. A path to the statutory form of government in a more timely manner without a lot of issues to deal with. So, but this is, the ballot language is out there. Thank you for all your work on this, though, and your commission, because I know it's not an easy transition, it's not an easy problem to solve, so.
Why would it be?
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Great, of course, it's the language that.
It's about three dollars long. Yeah, it's, yeah, I'm not going to read it here, but it's out there, you can look for it and find it.
Would you like a copy?
Yeah, she would, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. You have all the copies?
Yes.
I I have one.
I I want a copy.
Okay, any discussion that any committees need since the last council meeting? Hopefully so. Uh, department updates? Do we have any?
Um, it's not the update night, but, uh, I was asked to. Give the green township update?
Okay, thank you, Chief Barbara.
So on March nineteenth, which was last Friday. I received a directive from the acting city manager. To close up the green township proposal and announce that I am withdrawing from it. I cannot withdraw from it because the only thing I have done is get a proposal for services. Uh, police and fire committee has not brought forward a proposal for green township coverage at council for discussion, effectively stopped the process. So there's nothing to withdraw from because it didn't get passed the police and fire committee. So I'm now seeking guidance from council. On how to best communicate with green township trustees that contact my office regarding the decision of the city council to not move forward.
My suggestion of, uh, green township contacts you, refer to this acting city manager.
I could do that.
Go ahead. Any questions for Chief Barbara? Yeah. Thank you, Chief, thank you. Uh, any other department updates? Chief Oliver, did you have a department update?
No.
Mr. Rob?
Um, yeah, so I believe the, um, the council clerk circulated. Uh, along with the council packets for members for tonight's meeting, the, um, certified, um. Ballot language for the May sixth ballot issue, issue four. Um, as certified by the, um. Athens County Board of Elections. Um.
Is that what he just gave you?
Uh, that's, that's the, um. That's the format of ballot language as exactly as it will appear on people's ballots, but, um.
Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Rob?
Well. Yes and no. The certified ballot language was what the attached one included in the council clerk's Friday email. Which looked more like this. That's, oh.
I said, I said it.
Yeah, so it's the, it's the same language, but this copy has her signature. That the board of elections required, so she caused that to be delivered, you know. She signed it, caused it to be delivered to the board of elections. They then generated this off of that document, so council now has full. Uh, bold doc, it's the same thing, but it's just this one that was circulated on Friday has her signature on it. I know it's been kind of confusing and kind of with, uh, that lawsuit that was filed. If council would like me as a city attorney and the council clerk to put together a joint report on just what was submitted when. That that's certainly more than. Uh, finally becomes prerogative, like, just so it's all clear on what is, you know, which document is what. Uh, whatever council record can be.
It it might be, it might be prudent to do that to cover, you know, I think, go.
Sure.
Just to.
Sure, keep everyone on the same page.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Or or if somebody wants to see that page.
Sure, well, it would be a public record, so.
That, well, that's what I mean, but I mean, in in case somebody, uh. You know, this is.
Well, I can, I can put it together, I think both the clerk and I would just need to kind of.
Sure.
Do a joint.
I mean, that would be a suggestion, I'm not making any council decisions here.
Sure, well.
You know, I'm just saying, it's ever you and our. Our backs with this.
Yeah.
Or if if an explanation is needed, it'd be there.
Okay, we can certainly put it together. More work for us, but, um.
You can just set set the bar apart now.
Um, no, that, uh, um, I did, oh, one other thing related to the, um, issue twenty-three commission. Um, this report we didn't discuss was, um. I did report to them, I've heard back from the state league of women voters. They, um, they sent me an email, I believe, last Thursday, basically indicated they already have funding. Um, to put together their series of town halls for the ward map run. So I'm hopeful, I told them, we'd like to get that process going as quickly as possible. Of course, it's their process. Their, though, did say, and I made it clear that the city, including myself. Cannot be, you know, directing that process, that's their process. They told me what they'd like to do in goals, basically have a. Crowd source publicly, uh, inputted map proposal. That then would be submitted to the new statutory council, but their hope is to get enough public input. Um. So that the public can be, you know, a full, full fledged member of that process. But anyway, that they are, that they indicated that. They've already got their internal funding for it, it's just a a matter of scheduling it, finding the locations. Um, to have the town halls and give word out to people, though.
So so is this to establish the wards, correct?
Correct.
And 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 the wards are are determined by population?
Correct.
Not not by Republican, Democrat, independent?
Correct.
So you can't use precincts, you have to use, you have to generate a ward, which is the population line.
Correct.
And there's four wards.
Correct.
So what is the public?
Well.
I mean, I'm just a question, what is, what what input would the public have?
So what the league of women voters would do is just have their expert come, and then they put on a big screen. Um, a map of the city, and then he'd be, you know, doing his, his, uh, work on the computer, but he's not, oh, sorry.
Well, you could finish, I just.
Oh, I was going to have a point. Um, he doesn't know Nelsonville, like, he's never lived there, so like, he doesn't know where the natural neighborhood boundaries may be. He's just looking at a bunch of blobs on a map, right? And so there may be a reason to divide the wards along natural neighborhood boundaries. But he wouldn't know that, the public, though, would obviously know that, so they'd need to tell, oh, well, you know, don't draw a line to the middle of. You know, I don't know Nelsonville.
Chestnut Street, Walnut Street.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they would be able to give him information about the Nelsonville community as it exists, where people live, not just a, an abstract map.
I was gonna give the example to the, um, precinct two. And I imagine this is one of the big problems with the wards, precinct two in Nelsonville used to be relatively equal population with the other precincts. It's actually been hollowed, precinct two is Ford Street, Conner, uh, Councilman Taylor's neighborhood. Uh, well, actually, uh, President Clement's as well. So back that way, the housing has been so hollowed out, it's it's much smaller. In fact, some elections in precinct two can get sixty voters in total, whereas precinct four in Nelsonville has become by far the biggest. So I imagine, uh. Just as a political person myself, I I'm in precinct four, but as a citizen, I wouldn't want my. Say on council to be diluted with half the town while precinct two has a few dozen folks deciding everything for their seat. So those wards will have a representative on council. And what you're saying is, if if the ward that, let's just say, I have a ward. And I represent a small amount of people, and somebody has a ward that represents a big amount of people.
Yeah.
If, what's the difference? I mean, the representation in this town this size, I'm just wondering. What what the difference would be as far as.
Fairness would be the big, fairness would be the big issue. Another issue is, like, precinct four has a lot of the businesses along Canal Street, it, uh, so maybe some residents, uh. I'm just, I'm coming up with an example, I'm just, maybe my, maybe I would want my councilperson to be bogged down. With all the fast food restaurants, I'd want them more worried about the neighborhoods, so I'd want a ward that worries more about the neigh, my neighborhood. I'm just making an example, businesses deserve representation too, I guess.
Right, right.
Well, businesses don't vote, though.
Right.
Vote in elections.
The business, though, but the people in.
Right, right, that's right.
If a ward's also disparaged by the number of people in it, that could also limit the number of individuals who could otherwise run. So if you had one.
Uh, that's true.
Sixty people, you have sixty total people who could run, and you have one with two hundred, then you have.
Like all the smart people be on Ford Street and all the stupid ones down on my neighborhood, Walnut. Uh, no, nothing against Walnut Street.
Okay, any other discussion?
That's all that I have for this time.
Okay, do you have any more questions? Okay, moving on, uh, we have one ordinance for first reading. Um, we can take that off, our board is supposed to be reading, or we do the second reading first?
Oh, by rule, second.
Okay, so we'll do that. I wasn't sure what I seen that was. Okay, ordinance for second reading, uh, ordinance fourteen twenty-five.
An ordinance authorizing the city to enter a trade agreement with D L Z Ohio for professional design services for the Nelsonville. Regional wastewater collection system improvement phase five. Whereas the city is currently undergoing a Nelsonville regional wastewater collection system improvement project. Whereas the project is in need of entering phase five, whereas design work needs to commence for phase five. Whereas D L Z has indicated it is willing to perform all professional services that may be authorized by the city. For the design of phase five of the project within twenty-four months of receiving a notice to proceed. Whereas the cost for D L Z's professional design services are not to exceed one hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars. All of which are to be paid out of the city's E P A grant for the project. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's bollocks. The city manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby authorized and directed. To execute the agreement between the city and D L Z Ohio for professional services. Attached here to and incorporated here in reference as a given one. Council hereby appropriates the sum not to exceed one hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars to cover D L Z Ohio's professional design services. To be rendered pursuant to the agreement. Funds for such payment shall be paid exclusively out of the city's E P A grant fund for the Nelsonville Regional. Wastewater Collection System Improvement Project and such other externally funded grant funds. The council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time committed by law, duly enacted by council on second reading, twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, motion to adopt, so. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
Can I ask a question of Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I know this is all government things, but just just about business stuff. This hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars, that's already in grant money put somewhere in the city, right?
Uh.
In in some, in some account somewhere.
It's not, it's not acquired in our account, uh, but my understanding of the phase, sorry, I'm on the right page, is that, um. They will be assisting the city in processing that financing like they have for the first four phases. Meaning, uh, getting those O W D A loans, which we, in grants, which are probably already approved. Um.
Also, we don't have the hundred ninety-six.
Right. So a lot of these are like pay as you go. Um, so when D L Z says we've charged this much in invoice, the O W D A will then say, here's that much of the grant money. Typically, we have to incur it, the expense before the money passes.
I got you, yeah. And and who? Who is the watchdog, uh, over the, um. The work orders, I mean, who looks at, you know, a hundred twelve thousand dollars for this, two thousand dollars for that, eight thousand six hundred? You know, who who looks at those and makes sure that we're getting the, um, the fair market value and, you know?
So that's a great question, so it's, uh, actually layered. Um, I gotta get kind of an auditor's answer, sorry.
Sure.
I wish I could just give you like, be like, that's the guy, but it's really, it's a, it's a series of layers. The the first layer is council, and that's all, like what we're doing today, these types of things and change orders. Um, D L Z being the project manager is responsible, for example, they have the expertise to know. To go out to the contractor and say, this street wasn't fixed good enough, okay, where'd you look at the auditor doing that, because.
Yeah, yeah, right.
What do I know about streets?
Yeah, right.
What the street's supposed to look like. Um, but then the city manager specifically, um. Uh, over D L Z makes sure that the work is done, completed, has to approve the drawdown, is what it's called. Which is the documents sent to the O W D A, um, to get that funded.
So D L Z has already got this grant.
I pretty much.
So, uh, we haven't started receiving the funds, but it's approved.
It's approved, okay, yeah.
It's a, and they have regular construction meetings, too.
So D D L Z is the design of, they they design it, and then a subcontract that has to be worked.
So currently, currently with this one, it's only been awarded for the design of the project itself. So construction has not yet been awarded.
So this is a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars for the design?
Yes, kind of both the plans, the maps. Um, calculate all the quantities that would be needed when the project does go out for bidding and construction.
So when they get the plans drawn, then the project is shovel red, then they can apply for the other funds for the actual work to be done. Okay, so this is just for D L Z? Mm-hmm. Okay. And the the fi, I was just going to say, the final check is that council has the final authority to decide who will be the engineer. Um, the city manager and and service director can recommend, but just hypothetically say council was dissatisfied as. We've been in the past, we, when I served on council, we switched engineers. Um, council has to order that change to ask for new bids for design work, if that makes sense. No, and I brought up the the regular, um, meetings that they have, too, just because not everybody knows about that. I've been to them before, I believe Nancy's been to them. Um, but that involves a lot of the contractors that are currently on the jobs, they come in, they need, they talk about. You know, where the projects are, where they are, the days they've lost due to rain, so they talk about.
After the project gets started.
Correct.
Okay.
And as they go, and that's before it, we would see a change order, a lot of times it's at that meeting to discuss. Um, for instance, I just know because it was in my neighborhood. Um, but they, they originally had, it kind of designed one way, and they need, one of the change orders that went through was that. To move, uh, um, a drain.
Right.
Because it, the storm drain, it was where it was originally constructed, it's right on top of the storm drain, which they didn't, weren't aware of. So then they had to move it, which then threw everything off a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Um, and those types of things come up in their regular meetings, I think it's a couple a month, maybe they meet.
I think it's twice, twice.
Twice a month, I think it is.
Twice a month?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Are you notified at other meetings?
Yeah, they're.
Their regular schedule. And they're usually here.
They are, yes, sir.
And there's minutes to all those meetings, by the way, there are minutes for all those, they're repeating six minutes of everyone at those meetings, so. There are minutes for all those, they're repeating six minutes of everyone at those meetings, so.
That's a liar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion? All right, um, quick call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic, yes, Mr. Flower?
You.
Ordinance fourteen twenty-five passed. Uh, ordinance fifteen twenty-five.
And ordinance authorizing the acting city manager to apply for an Ohio E P A water supply revolving loan account or W S R L A agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for construction of the water system improvement Phase Three project and designating a dedicated repayment source, loan financing, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to construct the water system improvement Phase Three project. Whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for an Ohio E P A water supply revolving loan account loan and principal forgiveness financing for the project. Whereas the Ohio E P A requires a government authority to pass legislation to apply for loan funding and the execution of an agreement as well as designating a dedicated repayment source for loan financing. Whereas council sees it fitting and proper to authorize the city administration to apply for a W S R L A loan, but to withhold authorization to enter any W S R L A agreement until the city approved application has been submitted to council. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. It is necessary to complete the construction of the water system improvement Phase Three project for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. It is necessary to apply for construction financing from the Ohio E P A water supply revolving loan account. The city manager, acting city manager and or police chief of the city of Nelsonville be and is hereby authorized to apply for a request from the Ohio E P A water supply revolving loan account, the financing required to complete the construction of the project. The end of the repayment of construction financing from the Ohio E P A water supply revolving loan account shall be water revenues generated from Nelsonville water customers. The authority granted by council shall be limited only to applying for and requesting from the Ohio E P A water supply revolving loan account the financing required to complete the construction of the project. Council shall by separate ordinance authorize the entering into any W S R L A agreement binding on the city. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of counter, council loading to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on second reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five at Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government. And there, as the, there is need to provide the financing for the water system improvement Phase Three project and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, moral, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on second reading on twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt. Salute. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
You're gonna be doing this, correct? Um, are you applying for the loan?
This is another one that gets managed through D L Z primarily. David, do you? These are the revolving loans, I'm not gonna explain.
Um, it's it's very similar to what we just discussed with the, um, essentially, should it, uh, I believe this one's not approved, is that right? Yeah, to apply for construction financing. So essentially, we'll apply, um, they'll give us our points in whether we are awarded it. I think there's a provision that says, uh, the work will stop without approval. I don't think there's any question that's, um, considered good in the state's eyes. Um, but essentially, it'll be the same process. An invoice is presented from a contractor. D L Z city manager approves, signs, submits to the state, and it's my job to check, see all the approvals, the itemized invoices.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna be here, so so this, this is a loan that we're gonna eventually have to pay back?
This one is, yeah.
Yes, this is the current.
And unless it's, unless it's, uh, decided later that they'll do principal forgiveness. Which we've had several, quite a few of those in recent projects in recent years.
We had significant. Principal, you mean, don't pay the principal, but just paying the interest?
I know, because they forgive the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The E P A is forgiving the loan.
Okay.
So I think in Phase Two, we had significant principal forgiveness where they gave us the loan and later we qualified to have it completely.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
So, um, this ordinance will be passed on emergency tonight because we don't have the five required. So it wouldn't be.
I thought we already did the first reading on it.
Second week.
Yeah, this is a second reading, but it's second reading on suspension.
Yeah, it'll just, it'll sit.
Oh, thirty days. Yeah, it'll take the thirty days.
I don't think I understand that. That's okay, I'll talk to you later about it.
Well, you need five people to be able to suspend the rules and we don't have five council members.
But I thought since we already had a first reading on it, this second.
Right, so just typical piece of legislation goes through a first reading, which no vote is taken, a second reading, which then is voted upon, and we vote to suspend the rules. And that waives the thirty-day with, uh, period as well, but since we don't have five, we won't be able to suspend the rules, right?
Any other council discussion? Quick call the roll.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ordinance fifteen twenty-five passed. Ordinance sixteen twenty-five.
And ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Boyd Cat Power Systems for continued generator maintenance service. Whereas there is a need for continued generator maintenance service at the city's own facility. Whereas Boyd Cat Power System is willing to provide such service and is suitable to provide such service. Whereas there needs to be authorization granted by council for the city to sign an agreement with Boyd Cat Power Systems for such service and to provide for appropriation for such service. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby authorized to execute the service proposal agreements attached here to as exhibit one with Boyd Cat Power Systems for continued generator maintenance services. Council hereby appropriates a sum not to exceed sixteen thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars payment of such continued generator maintenance service. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in meetings open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. Salute. Any citizens' comments?
Yes.
How how many generators is this, or is it just one big one somewhere?
There's multiple.
Multiple?
We have large ones, a water plant, a wastewater plant, and the bulk of them comes from all the kind of small to medium sized generators that help run the sewer lift stations.
Okay.
So power goes out for extended periods of.
So that's a pretty reasonable price for all of that, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any council discussion? Quick call the roll.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ordinance sixteen twenty-five passes. Uh, ordinance seventeen twenty-five.
And ordinance terminated in the city's principal life insurance group coverage and exactly in the standard life insurance coverage for city officers, department heads, and employees. Whereas there is a need for the cities to provide life insurance benefits to city officers, department heads, and employees. Whereas council finding it is in the city's best interest to terminate the principal life insurance group coverage currently in place for the city. Whereas council finds it is in the city's best interest to accept proposed life insurance policy coverage from the standard life insurer. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby authorized to execute the agreement attached here to as exhibit one with the standard life insurance for life insurance benefits to be provided for all full-time city employees as well as department head, city managers, city attorney, auditor, and all applicable union employees whose contract mandate covers coverage. Any such officer, department head, and employee may decline such benefit. The city's principal life insurance group coverage policy is hereby terminated once the city executes the agreement with the standard life insurer. Part-time employees of the city who are not entitled to coverage in a union contract can purchase coverage and benefits provided such part-time employee pay for the premium. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be, on site, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. Salute. Oh, second. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
Any citizens?
Any council discussion? Quick call the roll.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ordinance seventeen twenty-five passed. Ordinance eighteen twenty-five.
And ordinance establishing a policy for all interest earned on city accounts to be placed in the general fund. Whereas there is a need for the city to have a policy for interest earned on city accounts. Whereas the auditor of the state of Ohio and the city auditor recommend adopting the state standard policy of placing all interest earned into the city's general fund. Whereas failure by the city to follow the state standard policy may have adverse effects on future state audits of the city. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby adopts and ordains that it is the policy of the city of Nelsonville to place any and all interest earned on any and all city accounts wherever held and regardless of the form of account into the general fund. City treasurer and city auditor are hereby directed and authorized to take any and all actions reasonably necessary to put this policy into effect. Any practice of the city contrary to the policies set by this ordinance shall be deemed unlawful. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. Salute. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
Is this, is this a normal practice?
It is. Uh, this is the, if you don't mind, I'm gonna do a little, a quick little explainer. Um, this is the standard practice across the state. If you call any of our neighboring cities, neighboring to include far away places like Ross County, um, and also close like Athens. This is the practice in our state audit that is soon to be published, um, for two thousand twenty-three. This is actually a write-up because the city has a practice that has no policy. Um, meaning, we have interest and we post interest at books, but there's nothing in writing from the council that we can find that says it should be posted to the general fund as it is. One of the reasons I wanted to come up and speak tonight, I'm not speaking to a very big room, so hopefully, um, maybe a media outlet or somebody will be watching that can share the information. Um, but it was said loudly since the last meeting on the radio, uh, that this was due to lawsuits in the water fund and that the water fund was losing its interest to the general fund. And I actually wanted to be a little dramatic, I'm glad I wasn't, because I think that would have been probably just annoying to all of you. But I wanted to bring an actual stack of every time interest was posted to the books here in the city so that you could look at it, not that anybody on this council did, but for transparency's sake, I wanted everyone in the room to be able to see every single time interest was posted to the city, it was never posted to the water fund. Not while I was auditor, not while the previous person was auditor, not when the, um, uh, the lady before him was auditor. Uh, I think sometimes memories get short and they think it was, but then you go to the documentation and it wasn't. So I just mean to say, we have a very boring practice of placing interest in the general fund as everybody else does. But our auditors said, we've got to give you a write-up for not being able to produce a policy. So I asked the lands committee to review a very simple one-sentence policy same place in the general fund. Which brings us to today. Okay. But I just want to make sure I say, has nothing to do, the interest never went to the water fund. It can, um, council can place, for example, enough interest to make it proportional with how much money is in the water fund to all city funds. So in other words, if the water fund was forty percent of our funds, council could say forty percent of interest goes to that. But council never has, and the city's never done that, the city of Nelsonville. Um.
Can that be rolled back into a C D?
Yeah. Yeah, so when it, when it goes into the, um, it doesn't go into the general fund's budget. So in other words, it's not immediately available for spending. Um, accounting-wise, technically-wise, when interest is earned, it's not really available for spending till the next budget because the current budget's just built with what we already have. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, then we get this free money. It's not really free money, it's money for risking your funds with a low-risk investment. Um, and we're able to spend that. Uh, the reason, real quickly and I'll stop, the reason that interest is usually placed in the general fund in Ohio is because the state house has constantly cut funds to cities. City of Nelsonville used to get three, four hundred thousand a year from the state legislature in what's called local government funds. We now get close to around seventy thousand, so like a seventy-five percent cut. Um, most cities, in response to that, instituted an income tax or raised their income tax and placed their interest in the general fund. If that makes sense. Okay, I know it sounds like I'm being a little defensive or responding, but I had to hear about it like twelve times. If the radio station wants to have me down to talk about interest at the city of Nelsonville, happy to do it, but. The things I, I never thought would be controversial, but anyhow. Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Okay, quick call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Ordinance eighteen twenty-five passed.
I'd just like to say that was an excellent ex- explanation of it, thank you.
Thanks.
Ordinance nineteen twenty-five.
And ordinance authorizing the return of funds from the number two eleven Street Resourcing Projects Fund to the number two thirty Street Levy Fund. Whereas the number two eleven Street Resourcing Projects Fund provided funds to cover the recent Canal Street project. Whereas the Canal Street project came in far under estimate, specifically one hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars sixty-two cents underestimated. Whereas there is a need to transfer these savings to the number two thirty Street Levy Fund and council finds it is in the best interest of the city to transfer the full saving of one hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars sixty-two cents to the number two thirty Street Levy Fund to benefit the taxpayers in Nelsonville. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby finds and directs the one hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars sixty-two cents in savings from the number two eleven Street Resourcing Projects Fund shall be forthwith transferred to the number two thirty Street Levy Fund. The city treasurer and city auditor are hereby directed and authorized to take any and all action reasonably necessary to carry council's direction into effect. The number two eleven Street Resourcing Project Fund shall be closed out as of effective date of this ordinance. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, motion to adopt. Salute. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? Now, just to clarify, this money is not going into the general fund. It is going back into the Street Levy Fund.
Not as good of an explanation, but okay.
Yeah.
In light of the last ordinance.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
And this was saved, that's the important.
That's the important part.
That's right, Canal Street project came in way under. Okay, this is great.
Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Come in?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ordinance nineteen twenty-five passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance amending twenty twenty-five appropriations ordinance. Whereas twenty twenty-five appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations of fifteen thousand dollars to capital improvement fund six zero zero. Dash two five zero dash eight zero zero seven zero park improvement. For a lower purchase is necessary. Whereas appropriations four thousand five hundred dollars. To general fund number one zero zero dash six two five dash four one 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 two. The miscellaneous expenses for car. And ball league expenses for baseball and softball season is necessary. Whereas appropriations of five thousand one hundred dollars to grant fund five zero zero dash five five zero dash five five zero one three. Home grant projects for home grant expenses with half cap is necessary. Whereas appropriations of six hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars, forty-three cents. To Betty Johnson Fund. Ones, I'm sorry, one three zero, one five zero dash one zero one zero zero. Cool upgrades and construction for pool repairs and upgrades are necessary. Whereas appropriations to one hundred fifty thousand dollars to street levy fund. Number two three zero dash one eight zero dash eight zero zero eight zero road repair. For street repair projects with ODOT project savings is necessary. Whereas appropriations of eighty thousand dollars to the street construction fund. Two zero zero dash one five zero dash one, I'm sorry, eight zero 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 nine road repair. For street repair projects for the twenty twenty-five season is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The twenty twenty-five appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following fund. Appropriations in the sum of fifteen thousand dollars. From the unappropriated balance of the capital improvement fund. To line item six zero zero dash two five zero dash eight zero zero seven zero. Park improvement for a lower purchase. Appropriations in the sum of four thousand five hundred dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund. To line item number one zero zero dash six two five dash four one 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 two. Miscellaneous expenses for car and ball league expenses for baseball and softball season. Appropriations in the sum of five thousand one hundred dollars from the unappropriated balance of the grant fund. To line item five zero zero dash five five zero dash five five zero one three. Home grant projects for home grant expenses with half cap. Appropriations in the sum of six hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars, forty-three cents from the unappropriated balance. Of the Betty Johnson Fund to line item one three zero dash one five zero. Dash one zero one zero zero cool upgrade and construction for pool repairs and upgrade. Appropriations in the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the street levy fund. To line item two three zero dash one eight zero dash eight zero zero eight zero road repair. For street repair projects with ODOT project saves. Appropriation for the sum of eighty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the street construction fund. To line item two zero zero dash one five zero dash eight zero 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 nine. Road repair for street repair project for the twenty twenty-five season. The total appropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to commit changes to the city's certificate of resources. Pursued. Pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption. Pursuant to section four point one one of the Nelsonville City Charter, this ordinance provides for appropriations for free expenses. Will enacted by council on second reading the twenty-fourth day of March two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt? Aloud.
Second.
Any citizens comments? Council discussion?
One question. Did Jason ever get hold of the guy that was gonna look at the pool?
That I don't, I don't stop my head.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Taylor. I was told. That in two thousand fourteen. That a quarter percent. Uh, was put on to the city taxes. To cover maintenance on the swimming pool. And, um. I want to know, do you know anything about?
So, uh, it's a good question. I know, um. The timeline may be different than that. I thought the income tax was raised from one point five to one point seven five in nineteen ninety-eight or nine. Um, and then it was for ten years and it was taken off and then in two thousand fourteen it was put back on. It was. It was put back on. It was renewed, but it was not renewed with the pool language on it. So it was renewed with the language of, um, I got a copy of it. We had the. Random things we do in our auditors world. The auditors asked us to trace back. The income tax documentation, much like the interest documentation you guys handled earlier. And so I had to go back all the way to the sixties and find the original nineteen sixty-seven income tax ordinance. Uh, which was one percent. So I'm going off memory here, but if I remember right, it was renewed and the new language said city. Uh, maintenance upgrades, equipment. And assets or something real general like that.
It had no mention of pool.
Correct. And so in two thousand, uh, whichever year it was, it was right around fourteen. Um, that quarter percent stopped going into a. A pool fund, which was called the seven seventy aquatic center fund.
Now, this money that, uh, for, um, coming out of this Johnson's. Grant or, or. The fund that she gave the city, that's the total amount, isn't it?
That is. That's what's left.
That's what's left, yeah.
But to be fair, it started around six seventy or six seventy-five, so.
Not much. So, so that money, if we appropriate that money. Is, are we just going to be blindly giving it to somebody to say? You've got six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to go ahead and do stuff with the pool and make it work? Now I know that, I know that I'm not being facetious when I say that.
Sure.
And I'm not being degrading to any of, anybody doing that, but I'm just saying that. I don't see where the six hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, whether we even have a bid for this swimming pool. I think we, we need to start with a bid before we start giving this money, appropriating this money.
That's the first one I asked.
Real quick, so.
Yeah.
Well, first point, it's not just, no one gets blank check. Nobody can just write blank check, but Mr. Cohen did reach out. He has touched base with gentlemen. He has not made it here yet to look at it, but he said, we do need to have an engineer inspect the pool before.
This is the third time, I think, that Jason has.
Yes.
Attempted to bring this individual here.
Right.
But when this change was. When the levy was passed to build the pool, there was money. To do repairs and all kinds of things. That only lasted for a few short period of time and then that money was taken. To be used and it was placed. Part in the general fund, if I'm not correct, I'm not. Ms. Powell could tell you or Ms. Shear could tell you exactly, because I came the night that it was being considered. Because I was concerned. About what that was gonna mean if we had no time.
And I was told that by Ms. Powell that, that she was, she instituted that quarter percent to cover the pool.
Unfortunately, that's actually what it changed.
And it wouldn't have been enough, it wasn't enough even then to cover the pool, but it went to help offset some of the expense of the pool. Um, it's, it's been changed a couple of times over the years. We've never changed it back because we also had a problem with our general fund was in. Pretty dire straits, if you recall. Um, at one point we, before we had over a million dollars in it, we had sixty-eight thousand dollars in the, the general fund. So we, we put more into the general fund and less into the, the pool fund. So even though, even a quarter percent wouldn't have been enough to cover. The pool and all the expense that we've incurred. And a lot of these expenses that we've incurred, unfortunately, were not. They're not, they're not. You know, inexpensive, oh, we just got a, you know, water leak, we just fixed this pipe and, you know, we have a local plumber come in and fix that for us. It's. It's in the concrete, it's in, you know, the initial plans of the, that's. A much more substantial, you know, um, expense as we've noticed over the recent years, spending sixty thousand, a hundred thousand, you know, dollars just in trying to.
Wouldn't it make more sense to, to not do this? But to go ahead and find out the costs of what the pools, what's going to cost? Now I know this probably won't cover it because it's probably pretty expensive, so I understand, but somebody said it could just be the drain has separated and the water's leaking through one of the drains. I don't know. You hear all kinds of stuff, but what I'm saying is, wouldn't it be more prudent or more, um, frugal? For us to hold on to that money until we get bids in. On what it's going to cost to do that, and then if we got enough money, we can deal that out to the bidder if it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars. We still got five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
I think what you say makes perfectly sense with, it's, it just boils down to a chicken and egg problem. So the way I, the way I had helped, um. Uh. Chief Tolliver, um, I was getting hung up on your title there. Chief.
Yeah.
City, city manager.
Yeah.
Good person, Mr. Tolliver, um, and, and the service director, is we view this as the first opportunity to gauge council's interest on. Because, uh, several, actually almost everybody here in this room has been here more than. One cycle of, do we do the fixes? Do we not do the fixes? Do we do the fixes? Do we not? And so.
We talked about it in committee as well. This could be the seed money for a new facility.
And so it was a way to gauge council's interest. It, to answer the question more directly, um. It, it's not a blank check. So any funds that could not be spent, um. Uh, basically in the next, uh, what's left in the year, nine, nine months could not be. Like the city.
So it'll be your mark.
Your city manager would have to get council's approval of that contract. Anything with a bid, council would have to approve and actually select a bid as well. Or approve the bid, excuse me. Um, so in other words, anything that costs seventy-five thousand dollars or more, actually council will have to review it and choose.
So this six hundred, this six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Um, that would be put, that would be put in that line item account. And that line item account says for pool maintenance.
Yep.
And then, yes.
One more second. It's earmarking in point.
And then, um, yes, it would be, it'll actually be described as pool upgrades and construction. Um, and. And like I said, anything seventy-five thousand or more would have to come to council anyway.
Yeah.
Um, so what it kind of does is opens up the opportunity for the service director to do a lot of the smaller things, for example. Several parts of the pool need paint. Um, the lockers are really rough, the bathrooms are rough. They're not down in our pool, but it, it just needs fixed.
But we're gonna fix it before we start doing any of that stuff, I hope. We're gonna fix the leak before we start doing any of this.
Yes, and he, and so.
Bring those heads to painting and fixing and putting the new roof on and all that stuff, if you can't fix the leak, right?
Totally right. Yeah, I don't manage Jason, but I'm sure if he's here, he'd agree.
Uh-oh, he's, he's got him on the phone.
I'm sure he would agree.
He has touched me.
I'm sure, and, and the fix, so the actual leak almost guaranteed costs more than seventy-five, so council will see that. I'm, I'm almost confident. Unless it's a lucky fix, not gonna work.
So, so one more question.
Yes.
What, what are the, what are the drawbacks for taking that money out and putting it into that account? Can we, can we appropriate bringing it back out and putting it into where it came from?
Yes. So council has full control and council wants to say. Uh, let's say you guys did see the, the bids and you hated all of them. Let's just say they were all fifty percent over cost and. Took too long and you guys said, no way Jose. So if you pulled the plug on the whole thing, you could decrease the appropriation. Um, so that nothing could be spent or a restricted amount could be spent. Um, you could turn the bids down and then, for example, uh, start putting out bids for say a whole. Different project. Um, if council wanted to, um. I'm just gonna use a goofy example, paint every sidewalk purple. Um, council could say, we're gonna spend it on that instead. Um.
So it can be re-appropriated someplace else?
Uh, yes, for a different purpose, yes.
The, one of the things. It does line item for the pool and the pool maintenance.
Yeah, it can be changed. And now I can't change it because council's gonna be appropriating and I can't say, we can change it. You guys can.
Okay, that's right.
Um, just, it would, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention because of all the discussion we had with the family. Uh. Mrs. Johnson, I didn't know personally, um, but I heard many, many, many times, at least two dozen times, about her care for both Nelsonville community. Um, also the young folks of the community and finally, um. She was very into presenting a good, beautiful image, um, not just with yourself, but your. Your landscaping and, uh, she liked, um, plant life and outdoor recreation and. I'm using a lot of general terms because I didn't know her, but I heard over and over again how much she believed in a beautiful community, um, which is one of the reasons. Three years now, I think, council has discussed. Um, whether to use those funds towards pool repair. I think it might have been Mr. Dunphy who mentioned it first, um, some time ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Um, and Sonic? And Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Come in?
Yes. Ordinance twenty twenty-five passes. Ordinance twenty-one twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it.
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with D L Z Ohio for professional design services. For renovations within a city of Nelsonville facilities. Whereas there is a need for professional design work associated with the permitting documents provided. Change of options to provision and building permit provision for renovation. That have been performed within a city of Nelsonville facility. Including converting a street department building into an exercise facility complete with a new. With new additional bathrooms and showers, whereas the project is required as part of the city's obligations under the current police department collective bargaining agreement. Enter into by the city in two thousand twenty-four. Whereas D L Z has indicated that it is willing to perform all professional services as may be authorized by the city for the design of the project. Whereas the cost for D L Z's professional design services are not to exceed nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby authorized and directed. To execute the agreement between the city and D L Z Ohio for professional services. Attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as a deal one. Council hereby appropriates a sum not to exceed nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And cover D L Z Ohio's professional design services to be rendered pursuant to the agreement. City council finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Will enacted by council on second reading fourteenth day of April two thousand twenty-five.
This is the first reading. Is there any council, uh, discussion?
Oh, one, one thing, um. Chief. I, I'm, my, my understanding is that the offer was made to go to a local gym, a gym. Like Schultz is down here.
So.
And buy a membership.
Uh, so the contract specifically reads. Jonathan, if you, you can recall too, that the city shall provide a gym.
On site, I thought it was.
Yeah. Does it say onsite?
I can't recall if that sounds right.
Yeah, I believe it's that the city will provide a gym onsite.
And where does that, what contract?
The police department's collective bargaining contract.
With the union. So what would that do with workman's comp? Someone getting hurt back there on property and stuff like that?
Well, I don't know how specifically we'd claim the workman's comp, but there will have to be policies drafted as well as like liability releases. Generated for everyone to sign before they were used it.
Just like any gym, any, any gym has a liability policy.
With your membership, yeah, but it probably, they wouldn't be probably working out during. Worker, I don't, I can't imagine workers comp playing a role because they're probably not gonna be doing during work hours, not during the shift. I imagine they'd be doing before, after, or on the days off. Is that true?
We haven't got to that. Um, define policy section, yeah, that's kind of the, the reducing of liability issues.
Because if you're paying. Because if you're paying them to work, they shouldn't be over there.
Who, who would be using that?
It'll be onsite here at the city, so it'll just be up in all the city employees.
Not just the police.
The firemen.
That'd be ridiculous to make it just for the police if it's over there. I mean, there'd be
So the firemen and the
Yeah, that'd be fun, right?
Service people.
You got, y'all are also city employees.
Y'all probably be over there every day.
You'll be golfing.
That's probably right.
You'll have to be golfing.
I was golfing when you called me the other day.
It gets a little gray with taxable benefits too. We've never explored it here at the city, so I have, honestly, I'd have to sit down with Mr. Rowe and explore federal tax law, but most benefits where the city pays for a membership is taxable, um, to the employee, um, which I'm sure they prefer it not be. Uh, whereas if we're providing a closed space, in other words, uh, like Athens provides the community center, which costs to get in, that's a taxable benefit to the employee either way. But if it's a closed space just for public employee or just for city employees that has no membership fee, it would not be a taxable benefit. It's my very broad understanding. That, that may be another reason they had it that way.
Okay. Any other council discussion? We'll have a second reading. If you have a question.
I, I have a real quick question, that ninety, nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars is just for D L Z to say what it's gonna look like? So we have no idea at all how much it's gonna cost.
Well, the nine thousand two hundred fifty would be for the plans.
That's for them to
State per plan.
To do with the plans and what the city architect permits and such.
But, but there's no cost for the structure.
It's, so it's remodeling one of the storage buildings that's already back there.
Oh.
So it's just making some changes inside, surround
Okay, thank you.
Thirteen thousand dollars total for the remodel.
Okay, thank you, I have a question about that.
So it's about twenty grand for the whole thing designed?
Okay, uh, city managers report.
Yeah, we had a couple of good things here. Um, so I don't know whose initial idea was, however, Dan Biper, our P I O and proud member of Dog Park Committee brought a good idea to us. That's to work with some students at the Nelsonville, um, woodshop to build benches for the new dog park that's coming up. So we're gonna be, um, it and I, we're gonna be working on that, so we can get some benches built for the park, as benches were an item that were unfortunately cut from the funding. So we should be able to get a low-cost solution for that and then it'd be great to have the students be able to get some good experience making those. Um, Rocky reached out to me and they're looking to have a community cleanup day on April nineteenth, and they wanna help clean up and kind of beautify the common spark there by the pool. So we'll be working with them to provide a little bit of extra manpower or, uh, maybe have a truck or two there to haul away debris and that kind of thing.
You mean, are you talking about the new pool or the old?
The new pool.
Okay.
Um, quick construction update, Scott Street, all of the work is done except for pressure testing of the lines. So the road is now open, however, it's not been repaved yet. Um, the contractor has to pressure test the new lines that were put in and they're waiting on, uh,
Pressure?
Yeah, they're waiting on a date for the asphalt to be delivered. It's kind of uncertain, because the plants have just started opening, so, uh, they don't have a definitive date, but in the near future, Scott Street will begin to pave. Um, and then from there, the next phase of that project will be moving to Riverside Drive. They're at the bottom of the hill going up, covering those couple houses. Um, I've been working with Workco lately, uh, with that resolution you guys passed at last meeting, I believe, helping to take over ownership of a future live station. They're getting their bids out.
Oh, yeah, out of the boat.
Yes.
Yes.
So they're getting their bids put out now for, um, that probably could get started and they're really excited about that.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of good stuff coming with Workco.
Yeah.
They're putting a lot of work. Um, but another good thing coming up is the Tunnels to Towers run, scheduled for April twenty-seventh. Um, the local Tunnels to Tower run has already surpassed their funding goal with another month left to go. So now all we're looking to do is pass our registration goal. I believe last year we had around close to six hundred participants running, so we'd like to meet that.
But I've got five tickets.
You're gonna have five times?
I ain't gonna use them. I think I will participate in it, though. I think I will.
It's nice to just walk.
It's a five K, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
It's nice to go and walk.
But I, then I have three tickets that I can give to somebody. Anybody needs to. Ms. Army, if you'd like to go on that one. Uh, YouTube, Mrs. Bumgar. Mrs. Sonic.
I love you, John.
I'm a little fatter right now. Yeah. I go with the win. I, I noticed.
You can't make it a beat.
That's, that's right, that's okay.
That's all I got for that.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Any questions for Chief Tolliver?
Uh, on the dog park, um, have there been any council meetings lately? I haven't seen a notice of one.
Um, they had one a little while ago, do you remember what it was, Sam? Or do you have any?
It's been, it's been a little while. Um,
I haven't seen any since November.
I'm sure they'll be having one soon, because they just had the first draft of their plans come back, so I'm sure they'll have it heading soon to go hard.
Uh, any council questions for Chief Tolliver? Thank you, Chief Tolliver.
Hmm?
Could I do the order, Ms. Sonic?
Just like to wish everybody here, thank you for having tonight.
Yeah, all these people.
Have a safe trip home.
Wait a minute, isn't that transportation for my?
I'll be more than happy.
Mr. Powers?
Um, well, on that Tunnel and Towers, I, I hope we do get, is anybody out there in, uh, YouTube land, um, I hope we do get surpass our, our goal, because it is such a heartfelt organization that, um, that I think that we should turn out and support and donate especially, uh, to that, uh, if you, uh, I mean, we have two officers, firemen and one officer that's lost their lives and, uh, they've helped them greatly, so we appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
I have nothing.
Okay. I do not either. So with that, I'll make a motion to go into executive session under R R C one twenty-one point two-two G for personnel and legal matters, finding in Mr. Rowe and Chief Tolliver. There's a motion on the floor.
Sir. One second. All right, ready? Ms. Flowers?
Um, we're going to go in there, exactly the same. I would, yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Sonic?
Yes.
Um, if it's any topic that's touching on the usual, I can't I don't think I can just begin that discussion, whether council has a specific question about whether that was the record.
Okay.
Or you can call me in a bit, but we're tight.
Okay. All right. With that, we're going to executive session. I'll make a motion to return from executive session at nine forty-eight. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. So at this time, I'd like to, um, make a motion that, uh, today we received a letter from Tom Kangjemi that he will be ending his, uh, employment on April seventh, and I'll make a motion that we accept his letter of resignation.
A second.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Um, this president, I would motion that we, uh, ask the acting city manager to post, uh, for an interim city manager, be effective April eighth. Uh, we can, he can set the deadline whenever, but I would say that we should just go ahead and have him post, uh, position seeking for a interim city manager.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second.
A second.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman? Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Longing.
Okay. Um, with that, a motion to adjourn. Admit.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.